The Commissioners will come back out of recess. This is our budget workshop, and we've had a request from Dr. Phipps if he could move up and be first since he's got a meeting at six. So, we're going to honor that. Brian, do you have any remarks?
Just a couple. Just to hit the, just housekeeping piece. On the schedule we sent out, we said we were going to start with General Government Departments working through the budget, General Government, Human Services, Community Services, and then Education. And like I said, Dr. Phipps asked because of his prior commitment, we could do that. We're prepared to do that. It's not a problem. So, we'll start on page 121 in your budget book. But then we'll go back and pick it up at the top and come a little way back down if that's acceptable to the President. The second piece of that is we, unless, haven't really heard any additional questions from the Board since we presented you the budget. So, we're prepared to answer whatever questions that come up, but we haven't been given any. So, if they're, I'm just saying, you might need to give us a minute on a couple of them. If you've got something really detailed, we might need to pull some stuff for you because we haven't had any.
You've had one question.
We've had yours, yes, sir. I apologize. We did have one from you, and we were able to address that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we begin, I think there's a serious policy issue that needs to come before this Board. I don't see how we can possibly review a budget line by line when we have a major change in direction in the financing of county government with the proposal that we have a $3 million bond issue to finance a part of this budget. I think-
It's not a bond issue. Installment financing with a bank.
Okay. You're going to borrow $3 million.
That's our proposal to the Board.
Okay.
And it's, it would be an installment financing that's allowed under 16820 financing, which you would pledge the collateral of the facility to that. So, it's not a bond issue.
Well, I understand that. But the problem here is we've got a major change in financial policy because we have been pay as we go for as long as I've been a Commissioner, and for as long as anybody can remember before I was a Commissioner, the county was pay as you go. So, you've got $3 million in expense that's outside of this budget that's going to be financed, and it's going to take 10 years to pay it off. And my question to members of this Board, because if you're going to do pay as you go, you're going to have to look at this budget review differently than you look at it if you're going to borrow $3 million in order to make this budget work. So, my question to the Commissioners, to the Board of Commissioners, is who on this Board supports the borrowing of $3 million in order to proceed with this budget?
Okay. I'll start that. I was probably the one that instigated the possibility of borrowing funds as it related to the First Bank renovation, and challenged our manager and the Chief Financial Officer to look at other projects that we could speed up in the process in the same sort of financing. You know, this is not a done deal. This is, this is our workshop, and as we go through it, I think we'll see some of the questions and some of the things that you're talking about. It, you know, it's, it's an alternative. It's the same thing that we, you know, for example, we had discussions when we did the $1.8 million radio system, whether we would finance that or pull it down out of the general fund. And we had conversations about, you know, paying half and, out of the fund and then borrowing half of it, and we chose to pay that down. We did the same thing when we purchased the building and purchased other real estate. You know, I think that our fund balance is down to the level where if we want to do certain things, we need to protect our fund balance at the level that it's at. So, I mean, I'm the one that probably got that started as, as part of the budget process.
But, Mr. Chairman, you just raised another issue that, that is a problem, and that is the $1.8 million for the radio program system was not an on-the-budget item. The $1.8 million was pulled out of the fund balance, and it was set up as a capital expense. It doesn't show up to the taxpayer as an increase in spending, and that's part of the problem with this budget. We are becoming an awful lot like the federal government in the last three or four years. We're taking so much stuff off of the budget and putting it into other things, and that, and to capital projects, taking it directly from fund balance. It never passed through the general fund for spending, so we have a distorted budget to start with. And now we're proposing that, now the proposal is that we borrow $3 million in order to make already a very heavy budget go forward. We can, we should, we should have a discussion before we get it. If we're going to have to get into this and try to cut something in this budget and not borrow money, we need to know that now. We don't need to know that and when we finish this and everybody sits here and stares at the wall and rubber stamps this stuff. So, I don't hear any other Commissioners objecting to borrowing $3 million to make this budget work.
That's because I've not recognized anybody else other than you at this time. So, any other Commissioners want to comment on the option of using financing to meet the county's needs, the natural needs?
I'll comment.
Okay.
For a number of years, we've allowed major projects to be postponed and postponed and postponed, and now we face the issue of having, we've hit a brick wall and we face the issue of having to do some of these things. Now, we have various options, and I agree, we're going to be going through the budget. We're not making final decisions tonight on how we're going to spend the money or where the money's going to come from, what projects we're going to do. And that will be handled through our discussions for the next three or four nights. When you look at some of these projects, if we are to borrow the $3 million to pay off some of the projects, they're needed. If we're not, if we still decide, this Board decides that we need these projects and we don't borrow the $3 million, then we're talking about a six cents increase, and I'm not prepared to raise taxes at this point in time. But this, we'll be discussing these issues in detail, this Board, so I have no issue for, for us to discuss these, this $3 million loan as part of the budget process. We may, may not go with it.
Well, my question to the Board going into reviewing a fat budget, and this is a fat budget, if you're, if you're not going to finance, then we need, when we review this, we need to decide what we're going to cut and how much we need to cut as we go through this budget.
Brian, I saw you raised your hand.
Just wanted to, Commissioner Richardson is correct in that the, the radio project was a capital project. It did come in, it was, it was done by the Board, it wasn't in the budget initially. It came in from fund balance. But we have shown that as a transfer in this budget document. So, if you look on page 24 under the revised budget, you'll see that a transfer to other funds is $2.5 million. So, we do show that in the budget, so you can do apples to apples when you're looking at the budget.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I understand that, and that's the bookkeeping of the thing. What I'm talking about is the policy issue of whether Beaufort County crosses the line and all of a sudden starts borrowing money to run government, because the community college are two things in the, in the school system, are two things that are in here, and this is funds that we normally give them, and now we're going to finance the funds that they're going to get and spend within a year over a 10-year period of time. Now, when you start borrowing like this, it doesn't seem like it ends. If you look at what's happened to what was a $25 or $26 million fund balance three years ago, it's now like a $15 or $16 million fund balance. See, in addition to all of the money that's in the budget, we have been through another $10 million in spending in three years. So, if you're going to control spending and keep taxes down, you know, you have to make the decision before you start with this budget. Sitting here and reviewing this budget without having in the back of your mind how you're going to handle that $3 million loan for, for something that you're going to, it's like buying ice cream cone. We're going out and borrow $3 million to buy ice cream cone. That ice cream cone is going to melt real quick and be gone, but we're going to take 10 years to, to pay it off. This is not good management, and, and that's my point here. If the Board decides that you're not, that you're going to do the $3 million in financing, I think you should decide it before you go into this budget. Otherwise, no one knows what needs, what they might want to cut. If you know that you're going to whack off about half of that $3 million, which I disagree with, that we have $3 million worth of needs, if you're going to whack off a million and a half of that, say, and do that in the coming year, be added to this budget, then we need to find a million and a half in expenses to take out of this, or we need to raise taxes. I don't advocate raising taxes, and I don't advocate borrowing money to run the government on. So, you know, once again, silence means consent. I take the silence of this Board on this issue as you support borrowing $3 million for continuing for, to make this budget work.
I, I think the options are on the table, and that's what the, that's what the purpose is of the budget workshop. We're, we're not here to vote tonight on the budget or whether we're going to borrow the money. That is one available source. Brian, you, you were looking like you've got something to say.
Well, I would like to say to the Board, just for clarification, I think we've addressed it in our manager's message, and we've been pretty straightforward about that and how we built the budget. None of the borrowing is for continuing expenses. It is, now, you may debate whether one of the projects that we put in there is financeable over 10 years, but what we did was we looked at projects to say, do these projects have a life in excess of 10 years? And if they do, then we felt they were eligible to be able to be financed for 10 years. So, I mean, you can debate those, that's certainly for the Board to debate, you know, just an example, like with the school system. When y'all met with the school board, they said, "We're proposing to buy two activity buses at a total of $178,000. One school bus, that school bus will last us 18 years. That other school bus, they will, they will last us 18 years apiece." So, we said, "Well, if they'll last 18 years, we can finance them for 10." So, that's what we did. We went back and looked at projects, whether it was the First Bank renovation, or whether it was work at the courthouse, you know, whatever it was, that would at last, at least last 10 years, in our opinion. But again, that's for you to debate and determine. But this is not for, this is not for continuing funds. We are not spending ongoing money out of this bond, out of this, out of this borrowing package.
Well, and that's my point. Up until now, our policy has been that we were pay as you go, which meant that there were things that got put off and delayed and not done. And I don't know of anything in the county right now that is a horrible need for. There's a lot of wants and desires, but there's not horrible needs out there. That's just figment of somebody's imagination. So, the question is, that's in front of this Board, is are we going to continue to be pay as you go, or are we going to go to debt financing to run our government for continuing operations? Because if you do, the taxpayers are going, in addition to paying your taxes, you're going to be paying on this bond, this lending, let's call it, for the next 10 years for what we have been calling continuing operations in the past. It is a major shift in county policy. We have a fund balance in the last three years that's gone from 25 million down to about 15 million. That's an extra three and a half million a year that's come off, that's, that's in spending, that doesn't show up on the books. The books are cooked. They're not fair. Manager can tell you, he's telling you this all he wants to, but if you look at what spending was five years ago in this county, and you look at what spending is now, and you look at how the fund balance has gone down, the only thing you can ask yourself is, where did the money go?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, again, I want to tell you that our staff works with integrity, and there's been no cooking of the books, as Commissioner Richardson said. We take very seriously our job and how we deal with the books and how they're presented. They are presented fairly, and we're here to answer any questions about those, so I don't appreciate the, the comment. If you will look on page 23, you will see the unassigned fund balance. And to that extent, in '14, it was $19 million. It is down to '14, so there has been some expenditure of that. When you say 25 million, there is a difference in, in unassigned fund balance and fund balance. There's a certain amount of fund balance that is restricted, and you cannot spend. That's where you had a, that's the larger piece of it. You will see clearly on page 23, and there has been expenditure. You have dropped from 37% in '14, $19 million, down to 14. That's your spendable amount, but it's not 25 to 14. But that's, these are the numbers.
Thank you very much. We're getting it.
These numbers come from the audited financial reports, all of those, all the way until you get to the projected 2017 and 2018 fund balance number.
That's factual information. We're going, we're going to move right into, because I want to make sure we give proper time to our superintendent. So, Don, if you will, and whoever else with your team.
Do you mind if I tee it up real quick?
Yes.
Okay. What we did this year in, in the schools' budget was, you have, you have two expense line items, as you normally do. We've added a third one. You've got the current expense budget. You'll see the actuals as they run across, just kind of run you back through. On the main page, it rolls up and gives you those numbers on the actual, what the original was, what the amended was, and what we recommended. On the current expense, we took, we took the current year's expense, bumped it by 2%, and that was what we, that's what we recommended in the budget. That was for continuing operations, the current expense budget you give them. Then there was a capital outlay piece. We looked at, what did they receive last year in capital outlay? And that was the 937-100. Then we went back in and looked at projects that they gave you on their capital sheet, and the superintendent's actually looking at some of it to make sure we're still good with what we, what we talked about, and looking at next year's as well. But what we did was we looked at that and said, "What of those will exceed 10 years, and what do we feel are applicable to be financed, those bigger projects?" And that's where we came up with the $659,700 in cash capital financing. And then there's $330,995 in, in straight cash capital that you would give to them to do smaller projects. So, that's how your, that's how your budget lines up last year to this year. Now, there was some differences last year in that you gave the school system some budget flexibility to take money from capital and move it to, to current expense. We, we didn't do that. We took where we were last year and booked it based on that. So, you'll see some differences in those numbers, but just going to tee that up for you. Thank you.
Just here to answer any questions. We did our presentation. We provided the documents to you. The only thing I would stress is on the proposed local budget request that we had, there were three line items that included some information that came out of the Governor's budget and also the class size reduction. We've gotten a little bit more information, at least on the class size reduction piece, of where we stand with that, but we've seen the Senate budget. We haven't seen the House budget yet, and the Senate budget is a little more favorable in terms of being able to reduce that money. We don't know if the House budget will restore some of those cuts. I don't know what will happen there yet, so we still don't have the full picture in terms of the bottom part of that estimated expenditure that I shared with you that was tied to the budgets that would come out. We also don't have the federal budget yet, and I apologize, we don't have that. It's difficult to build a budget, and you don't know what you're going to have in terms of revenue, but we, you know, we expect that the federal budget number that we may get will be a little bit smaller, but we hope it's not a significant cut, and that will have a great deal to do with how we handle the class size reduction and the ability to mitigate those losses as much as possible.
So, you're, you're saying right now, there's no changes in what we have in our book?
There's not any changes. There could be on those bottom three items, once we have the, a firm number from both the state and from the federal government, but we don't have that now.
The, these are the same numbers that we had there in our joint meeting.
That's right.
Any, any questions?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Buzio.
Perhaps, let's talk a little bit about technology. When I look at what we're proposing here, I don't see any money for technology.
We have, well, it was listed in the capital-
Yeah.
-request that we have, but in the-
Your request, your original request. I assume that, that's important.
It is. It's the ongoing work that we do. There's replenishment cycle that we have for devices that are in our system, and Mark Malek, our Director, I was unable to get up with today, I wanted to bring in an item-by-item list for you of what that $400,000 system-wide request that we've had, this kind of standing request in our capital, what that actually is, and I don't, I'm not able to answer that question, but we'll give you that information as soon as I can get it.
But I assume you consider, and your teachers consider, that technology is an important tool for educating our children in this county?
Yes, sir.
Is this a recurring expense, or is it a one-time expense?
It's recurring, and some of the items are, again, replenishing devices that we have. It could be the, the Internet wireless access that we use to conduct business. A lot of the things that we have to do now are testing-related with the Department of Public Instruction. Again, I will give you an item-by-item list. I don't have that in front of me.
That's fine. So, what you're saying also is the state has mandated certain programs that only can be done through technology?
There aren't a good deal of the transmission of data that we have is done electronically.
Okay. I don't want you to address safety and security in any detail at all, for obvious reasons, but I see that we haven't allocated any funds for that either.
We'd have to do that out of what was remaining after those projects were completed. I think a little over $300,000 is what would be there for the rest of the capital projects that we have.
Okay. I know we have a unfunded mandate, it looks like, coming down from the state in 2018, has to do with class, class size. Has any money been put aside for that possibility?
No, and we don't know what the overall impact will be with that. What we've been told by the General Assembly is they'll start to allocate positions like art, music, PE, and world languages, which we currently don't have as a line item allocation. We've been told we would get funds for that, but we don't know what that, that year's going to look like at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Phipps.
Mr. Richardson.
Are there, within this budget, anywhere within the expenditures for the coming year, are there any additions to buildings, increasing the size of buildings, or building new buildings?
No, sir.
All right. The, how about the remodeling of existing buildings, or the replacement, or the putting back into service of existing buildings?
No, sir.
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes.
Dr. Phipps, one thing I forgot to ask you, is the per, per pupil funding issued by the state decreasing or increasing for public school children?
The overall dollar amount goes up. If you take a look at what that looks like from year to year, the number of students in North Carolina is increasing, and the larger proportion of the funds that we get that go back to charter schools are increasing. So, the net result of what we see, I think, tends to go down. We're a declining enrollment school system. Our numbers have gone down slightly over the last few years. We had two years of actual growth, but there are other places in the, in the state that are seeing large enrollment numbers. We're not seeing that in Beaufort County.
So, basically, what you're saying is the per pupil amount of each child is decreasing?
It would decrease with, with the-
Thank you.
... number of students that we have. But that varies county by county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No questions. One of the things I would like for you to touch on, since we have additional people in here tonight, is when you said we have a declining enrollment, speak a little bit as it relates to the three areas where some of our high school students are going at that were not available, you know, 15 years ago.
Well, I think 15 years ago, the public schools were the only game in town for the most part, and what we see now is the proliferation of charter schools. We see the early college high school, which is one of our schools, but several of our high school students elect, apply and go to the, to the early college high school so they're not in the three traditional high schools. We also have the Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agriculture, which is in Jamesville now, and we have a good number of students, I think 26 of the freshman class in that program came from Beaufort County. And along with, with those students, when they go there, the money flows to those schools. So, that, those are funds and individuals that were in our school system that aren't here anymore. And, and we want to work on, you know, I, I'm not against the idea of, of competition and having other opportunities for parents. I want to find out what it is that we can do better to make sure that we're holding on to our students, and there's some things that we might not be able to do if it's on a religious viewpoint, some things that we're just not able to do because of the way things are set up. But if, if it's a quality of education, if it's quality of opportunities, if it's anything like that that we feel like is in our purview and control, we certainly want to do a better job so that folks would choose, we want to be a school system of choice, where people have options to go and they choose to stay with us. But I think one of the sheets that we gave you showed the increased number of dollars that are going out each year to charter schools, as, and that's directly related to the number of students that we have that are enrolling in charter schools. And then you have the voucher system in North Carolina for students in private schools, and we have a number of students that are going there as well, and then we have folks that opt to homeschool their students. So, there are a lot more education options available now than there were, say, 15 years ago, and I think folks are taking advantage of those.
The 61 students that go to the Technology School in Jamesville, do we transfer money that comes from Raleigh over to them?
The state money goes directly with the student. We, the, the local money is a pass-through that comes from us that we have to pay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You still going to be able to make your next meeting?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Brian?
Sir, I guess we'll go back to page 29, which is General Government. We can start there. So, again, just to kind of, to kind of tee back up how we talked about this. On the, on each department's page, you will see the department, a brief description of the department. You will see a roll-up on the front page that shows, it broken down by personnel, benefits, operating, capital outlay, and then totals up. If you turn to the next page behind that department, you will see the line item detail for each line item associated with that department, and you will see 2014 actuals, 2015 actuals, 2016 actuals. You will see the original '17 budget. You will see the revised '17 budget, which means any changes you've made throughout the year. Then you will see a '17 estimate, which is where we anticipate the budget finishing up at the end of the year. Then you will see the '18 requested. That is the request that came from the departments, and then you will see an '18 recommended. That is the recommended budget that, that comes after we have the negotiations with the department heads, as we go through the CFO and I sit down with each department head and go through those, line item by line item, and discuss them in detail, and make cuts or make add-backs. Sometimes we look at them and, and our department head has, has said, "Well, you know, we think this is where this needs to be," and we'll look back at history and we'll say, "Well, what about here?" And we'll find sometimes that there's been an error, or we just had not anticipated something. So, we may either, you may see on the recommended, we've added some in there. More than likely, we'll see that it's either the same or a little less. But again, as we talked about in the opening piece, this is the governing body's budget. It is up a little bit. The majority of that is related to the membership pieces, that we wanted to try to get back under the county as a whole, instead of having them sit out in outside agencies where you were funding in the outside agency category, like memberships to the Chamber of Commerce. That, it's really not an outside agency. It's a membership that you pay to be a part of that organization, just like you pay a membership to be a part of the Association of County Commissioners, the National Association of Counties, those kind of things, the COG, the School of Government. So, we pulled those under. That's where we'll see some of those, you'll see that bump up. But essentially, you are, you are from the, the original budget, 372, you're up to 391, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about your budget and what we, what we estimated out for you on any of those.
But the biggest part of that change is under dues and subscriptions, which is the movement of the, like the state association and the national and the Chamber of Commerce?
I will tell you exactly what's under that. Give me just one second. Under that dues and subscriptions, there's the School of Government dues, there's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, there is the Council of Governments, there is the RPO, the Rural Planning Organization that you remember, there's NACO. We also include in that American Legal, which is the folks that, that publish the code and keep it updated on the web, so that's a, a subscription. There's Southern Album Oil Association, there's the Washington Beaufort Chamber of Commerce, the Bellhaven Chamber of Commerce, the Aurora Chamber of Commerce, and the North Carolina Association of Black County Commissioners Association, organization. Those are the dues and subscriptions that are under there. So, it went from, and again, a couple of those, we didn't have in there last year. We had them in other places. All the chambers, we actually had out underneath the outside organizations. We just felt like it made more sense to be up underneath the chamber where we have all the other dues. It's the same money, it's just in a different place in the budget, and our goal, as we go through the budget, and as we've stressed all of our departments, is to put the right expenditure in the right place, and that's what we're doing. It's taken us a couple of years to do that, to get things where we want them to be, but then it's consistent, and we're able to watch those as we- But then it's consistent, and we're able to watch those as we go through.
Thank you. Any questions from, any commissioners? What are the proposals for the chambers for the coming year?
The Washington-Beaufort Chamber of Commerce is 1,500. The Bellhaven Chamber of Commerce is 1,000. The Aurora Chamber of Commerce is 1,000. And then there's some additional requested money from the chambers. If it's an additional request on top of that, it does go into outside agency, because this is simply a membership that we're showing under dues and memberships. So there is, I think, Bellhaven, has Bellhaven asked for some more money? $9,000, they've asked for some more money. That's the only one? Okay. So they will show up underneath outside agencies, because that's an additional request.
That's in the expansion?
It is in the expansion. It's outside of just membership.
What did they send us for justification for why they want this money?
We're going to get into that when we get to the outside. This is strictly the county's membership into the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, that's correct. The other piece is something that's in the expansion.
Can you provide me with their justification?
It's actually in your book.
It's actually in the book.
It's in this back section where we have service expansions.
Okay.
And we'll go through those individually.
All right.
And they'll actually be here to present it.
All right. I've read up to here.
If there's no other questions, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Do's and subscriptions. Now, what was it this current fiscal year?
Sir?
This current fiscal year, dues and subscriptions?
Due's and subscriptions, this current fiscal year were $31,000.
And it's going up to $42,000?
Yes, sir.
And that is due to more organizations, or of course you moved, what you said, or you moved organizations under there that were in other areas?
That's correct. It's not new organizations. I don't see there are any new organizations under there. It's just we pulled some of the organizations that were sitting in another part of the budget and pulled them up underneath the Board of Commissioners, because it is a, it is a membership for the county and the board representative.
So there's no actual increase then?
Overall budget, no, sir.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Right. We've moved money.
Okay.
I don't see that there, you don't see any new ones, are there any new ones?
There are no new ones. I mean, there may have been a couple that went up, like, I believe, the dues for the...
RPO went up a little bit.
For the COG went up just a couple hundred dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You want to move into county administration?
Yes, sir. That's on page 31. The other thing that you'll see, it's a little different on the board, because we just list the board members, but also on department pages, you'll see, again, the information about the department, you'll see an org chart that lists out how that lays out. You'll see contact information. Then you'll also see a full-time authorized position. So you'll go back to FY 1314 and see the number of positions that were in that department. And then if they've changed, you'll also see whether we recommend any changes in there. Again, the roll-up, and then on the next page, the overall, this budget is actually down just a slight bit. The original budget in '17 was 454, 978. This requested budget is 454, 823. So it is, it is flat.
Comments?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Drug testing, am I reading this right, professional service drug test? Is that for pre-employment screening, or was that a special one? Because I don't see anything allocated in 2018.
Yeah, that was actually the last time there was stuff there. And I believe the way that worked was we, it used to be maybe rolled up underneath the manager's office, and then it was spread out amongst the departments. We pulled it back up underneath HR, so that when they come in, it's done. But we do, we drug test everybody who comes in.
Up for screening?
Yes, sir. We do, we do a, it's a post, it's a post offer. So we offer the position, then we do the background and the drug testing, because of legal issues, we don't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards?
Oh, any questions? Okay. The next one is finance?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page 33 of your budget book. The major change within my department is actually in the org chart, and you'll see where we've added the customer service division of the Water Department, which was voted on by the board, I believe it was last December. We now have that listed underneath finance. The actual dollars, the cost for customer service, remains within the Water Department itself. So we could have done that a couple of ways. We could have put that in the finance department and done an admin charge to the water fund to charge them for that and bring the money back, to pay the general fund back. But we thought it was just simpler and more straightforward to leave those costs directly allocated to the Water Department. As far as my overall budget, it is up two tenths of a percent, or $1,101, from this year's current original budget. And most of that cost is associated with the cost of insurance increasing. I was able to absorb most of it, but couldn't cover the last $1,100.
And I'm assuming as we flip through the pages, we're going to see that in each one of the departments?
Yes.
As it relates to the benefits?
Yes, sir.
And that was based on a...
6.9.
6.9, 6% increase from the state health plan, and then local government retirement was quarter percent, quarter percent increase on local government retirement. And of course, that's, that's the piece you put in, and then it's also matched by the employee.
Are the employees paying any of the increase on the benefit side?
They are now paying, or they will, the state health plan runs in a calendar year. So starting, well, the proposal, because the budget at the state has not been finalized yet, and they're waiting on that, there's some language in the Senate budget about some different things, and who knows what the House is going to come out with. But the proposal from the State Treasurer's Office, which manages the health plan, is that there will be a level premium increase for the next four years? Five years? Next four years, there'll be a level premium increase, 6.96% every year for the next four years. That's their proposal. For, for the 70-30 plan, which is essentially what we call the employee-only plan, or it's the, it is the, it's not necessarily employee-only, you can get other stuff, but it's the 70-30 plan, which is 70-30, 80-20. So that's on the 70-30 plan. Also, they are proposing an increase of, or adding an additional, or adding $25 payment by employees for the 70-30 employee-only plan. Right now, if you are on the 70-30 plan, if you are an employee and you only have employee-only coverage, right now, there is no cost to you for that. The county funds all of that. If you do the 80-20 plan, you essentially buy up a higher level of benefit and you pay some for that. But if you are an employee only, and again, employees pay for their spouses, they pay for their family, the county doesn't pay for any of that. But if you are an employee only and you're on the 70-30 plan right now, you don't pay anything. The county covers all of that. The new plan that's being proposed by the, by the state of North Carolina, the State Treasurer's Office, and again, that's, it's yet to be seen how that all shakes out. The budgets have got to be finalized at the state level before we know. They are proposing a $25 payment by employees to the state to be on the employee-only 70-30 plan.
But it's not a done deal, but if they pass it, it means $300 a year for the employee.
It is not a done deal, but I would heavily anticipate that it will be that or it will be more, because the, my understanding from where the state is right now, they are, won't put words in their mouth, but I think they believe the benefit is too rich. I believe they think that the retirement system is too rich a benefit, and they're looking to shift higher costs from the, from the health plan, and they're also looking to, my anticipation is, to do away with the pension program and put in a 401K or something like that, so, for new employees, for new state employees. That would be my anticipation. Again, that's just me reading tea leaves, but I think that's where it's headed.
Any other commissioner with a question? All right. Human Resources?
On the human resources side, this is, it's a 4% increase. Again, some of this is related to the insurance piece, and then there's also additional funding put in here for the, for the drug testing and our, our randoms. We do randoms on some of our, on some of our water folks, our safety-sensitive positions that are CDLs.
You random on who?
We random our CDLs. We're required to do that under federal.
I'd be glad to answer any questions. Dolores is here to answer any of those questions you may have. But like I say, the largest piece, the largest bump there is from, in professional services and medical, which is our, our drug testing, and that bumps from 3,000 to 4,000. And again, that's pulling it all back under HR, so that they're administering, so we don't have it spread out amongst all the departments. It's just easier for us to track it, easier to take care of it.
Questions?
I was just wondering why you didn't random test everybody? I mean, to me, you're just picking on a certain few people.
Well, and I would agree with you on that. The problem is, the law says that we can only random safety-sensitive positions.
And you mean the guy that takes the water is the only safety-sensitive position?
Well, that is something that we're actually looking at. We will, Jennifer's actually putting that program together. The question becomes, what are, and you can debate that all day long, what's considered a safety-sensitive position? And if you're driving a truck down the road going 55 miles an hour, maybe that's pretty, you ought to be safe, you ought to make sure. But that's not always the case.
No offense, but if I care nine millimeter, I think that's safety-sensitive too.
Yeah. So there is some pretty strict case law on that, and under, under state, because you're a governmental employee, there's some, there's some things there that says it can only be safety-sensitive position. But she's, Jennifer's working on that, and our goal is to expand that into all, to determine what we consider to be the safety-sensitive positions, because there, I mean, there's a lot more than what you would think, and to be able to do randoms on...
Well, I just hate for you to pick on a certain few little people.
Well, and that's simply because the federal government requires that.
Well, I know what the federal government requires, but I mean, it don't make it right.
We have to abide by it, because it is the federal law.
Excuses, excuses.
Anyone else moving right along? Tax assessor?
So the tax assessors, this is down 7%. You'll see the, you'll see the org chart, same number of folks. You'll see the decrease on the roll-up. I believe the majority of this is related to some software, some computer software and support program that we're not renewing and don't have to renew this year. So you'll see, you'll see a bump, you'll see a decrease from the original budget of 132,500 to 85,000. So that's the majority of that. Again, there's some, there's some that goes up a little bit, you know, insurance and those kind of pieces, so they level out, they take away from some of that. But overall, it's about 7% down from where it was in the '17 original budget. And Bobby's here for questions that I can't answer for Bobby.
I see we have Bobby in the room. Any questions of Brian or Bobby, as it relates to the budget? We'll keep the questions to the budget. How about that? All right. Tax collector?
The tax collector, the budget's on page 39. And again, everything is the same there, position-wise, or again, we're not requesting, there are no changes in positions across the entire budget. This budget is up about 5.1%, and that is all mainly related to the legal services that are provided by the collection agents, the attorney that you engage, the KIS Financial that you engage to do foreclosure work for you. When he does that work, we have to pay him, so we have to show it on the expenditure side. There's also an offsetting revenue that comes in for that, but that's where the majority of that increase is on this budget.
Good call. Any questions of Gwen or the county manager, as it relates to his budget? Okay. Court facilities?
Okay, so this is the court facility piece that we use in, taking care of the courthouse. It is down, we show it down 9%, and that's because some of the, some of the projects that we originally had put, or were originally looked at last year in here, we reduced those because we proposed those in the financing package. So from the original budget, you'll see, and of course, this includes like funding for the jury commission. This also continues to show, this is a $12,500 expenditure that we put in there last year, and that's essentially, it's called under this courthouse operations, that is a budget line item for the clerk of court to use to replace small items or items that need, that they feel like need to be replaced in the courthouse, whether that's a chair here or there, or whatever that is. So that is maintained. And then utilities, and then just some general repair. Of course, again, in our proposed capital piece, we reduce that expenditure over there that we put in for capital, because we rolled it up into this one, so there's not, there's only $10,000 in there for that. And then also included in this one is the office rent that the county pays for the public defender's office. And then contract services, the 145, is a continuation contract for the courthouse security.
I've got a question, but I'm going to yield to any of these first, if they have one on the budget.
I do.
Okay.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
On the maintenance repair of the courthouse, where it went from 50 to 10, is that some of the projects we moved under the other area for repairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And on the contract services, 145,000, is that the cleaning service?
No, sir. That's the, that's the security service.
The what?
The security service.
Okay. Okay.
My question is kind of a technical, and I realize the $500,000 that we got in there that would be part of the $3 million loan is in another area. Keep them with the other departments, would it not be fair to present it right here as $500,000 as a financing piece?
We actually show the...
Well, I was going to say, actually, what will end up happening, if we do that financing, right now, it's sitting in the school budgets, the community college, the public schools, and the rest is in the maintenance budget. If we end up doing that financing, it will be pulled out of there into a capital project fund. So we actually won't show it in each department. We'll put in a multi-year capital project fund.
I started to send you a question, but as I went to the next, kept going through, I saw it.
That's a pretty easy one. Just keep them easy.
And that's something that we, when you have a project that crosses multiple, or crosses fiscal years, or crosses two fiscal years, we always pull those projects out and put them in a capital ordinance, so that they're very easily tracked and they're able to be watched.
So the way that ends up showing up in the general fund, when it's all said and done, it shows as a transfer. So we'll move the money out of the maintenance department and put it to transfer, and you'll see it leaving the general fund and going to the capital project fund. So it's still accounted for as an expenditure in the general fund.
So you can watch the money as it flows.
Got you. All right. No other question? We'll move to the Board of Elections.
So Kelly is here. I'll kind of tee it up for you. This is one that, who knows what this budget's going to be? You know, it's up 24%, but the majority of that is for municipal elections. You know that we provide the municipal elections. But there's also a revenue offset for that. The municipalities reimburse us those costs for those elections. So it bumps up during the municipal year, because that happens. As to how many members of the Board of Elections you're going to have, who knows? There are too many lawsuits in play to try to figure that all out, so. Anything you want to address, and I mean, I think Kelly's built her budget...
...start normal election cycle. It's easy to believe that we're coming out of the biggest one, as far as funds are concerned, because of the presidential. It's easy to think a presidential is our biggest election, but this year, on the finance end, is kind of our low end, because we don't have any elections this spring. this spring. But going into our next year, we've got our municipal elections that'll start this fall. We have seven municipalities and they will reimburse those costs to us. And then we also have the primary next spring, and then a possibility of a second primary next, next year, in that, the end of that finance, or fiscal year, excuse me.
While you're at the podium, and you may not be around when we get to talking about the paving, since you brought that up, you wanted to discuss how bad the parking lot is?
And I have talked with Christina about this right now. I talked to her coming in here. We have two potholes about, I don't know, they're about two foot wide and probably a foot deep right this minute, that we're trying to figure out what to do until we have some kind of work done to the parking lot. It holds water. It's always held water. I don't know if it was the way it was laid out when they initially built it. So anytime there's water, you know, rain, it ponds. And that pond that sits in that main drag is probably 100 yards. It's about a football field and about 10 yards wide. Wouldn't you agree, Christina? And that, yeah. So it, I don't know, I'm not an expert on how to fix it, but it just holds water in that parking lot. So something's going to have to be done with drainage to help that out. And that is just, it needs to be fixed.
Needs to be fixed yesterday.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we've done, we've done the best we could with what we've had, and we've patched it and put in concrete patches, and we've done some hot patches with asphalt every year. But it's just, we've patched it and patched it and patched it until we just, the patches are starting to fail now.
Any other questions while Kelly's?
Yes, sir. The machines, the voting machine. Is there a discussion?
There will be, there will be a discussion under expansion requests. And right now, our present board is asking the board of commissioners to have, what were we calling this? A capital expense fund, reserve fund. Our machines are at the end of their life cycle simply because the technology is starting to be old. So we're looking in the near future and having to replace the system. Now, do we want y'all to fund a new system this year? That would be great, but we think we need to wait a year or two. There are certification requirements. Right now, there's only one system that's certified in the state of North Carolina. We think that'll change over the next 12 months. Also, there is some discussion within the general assembly about matching grants. So we could maybe get half of this paid for in the next year or so. We'll follow that through the legislature. So right now, we want to make y'all aware of it because it's about a $300,000 purchase. And we're requesting y'all to kind of keep that in mind and set, what we're asking for is about $55,000 a year, which is a fifth of that money put aside each year for five years. So hopefully, that'll fund the whole purchase within, at the end of five years.
These machines will last more than four?
I do, I do.
So you're going to be back Monday night, next Monday night?
Yes, I will be back to discuss that.
Tuesday night.
Or whichever day it's scheduled for.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Register needs office.
So overall, Jennifer's here to answer any specific questions. Seven and a half percent up, but again, the majority of that is based on a couple of things. When we built the budget last year, we forgot, we forgot the contract piece for copiers and for her office. We were putting them somewhere else. So we got them back underneath her budget where it needed to be. And then there's also a $10,300 increase there where we didn't have anything last year for automation restoration. That is a pot of money that she actually received. So there's a revenue, again, what I'm saying is there's a revenue offset for this because that's a, there's a fraction of the amount of money when you record a deed, a piece of that payment goes into an automation fund that the state set up. And that money comes back to the county for Jennifer to do what she needs to do automation wise to keep things up. So we have to show it on the expenditure side. So when we're anticipating funds coming up to use, then we show it on the expenditure side, but there's also a revenue offset. So, well, those are the big two that drove that budget up a little bit.
And those funds are restricted. They have to be used for that purpose.
But that ten thousand is offset by additional revenue coming in.
We do, we draw it on those funds.
Any, any comments or questions while we have the department head here? Do you want to add anything, Jennifer?
No.
All right. Okay. Page 47. Now we're down to the maintenance part.
So page 47 is the maintenance building and grounds. And this overall budget is down a little bit, and that's simply because of the projects that have been pulled out. You'll see on page 47 where we have proposed the financing on this for 10 years. When we looked at a couple of things, and we talked pretty heavily about this in the budget, when I presented the budget to you in the budget message, but kind of want to hit that one more time. These are the big projects. The generator at the Seaboard Building for 115. And that's because the generator that is there is not sized large enough to handle that building. I don't know if it ever was. Christina had an electrical engineering group come in and look at it and give us the right size for what we needed. So we estimated out what that was cost. That generator runs the 911 stuff. It also runs our IT servers. Back during the hurricane, during the last hurricane, we came very, very close to that system going down because of a failure of that, of that system to be able to support it all. There's a little over $490,000 for the first bank remodeling. That's based on the estimate that we got from the engineer. The courthouse improvements, that includes the work in the jail and the walk upstairs with the ceiling grid. We've estimated that at about a half a million dollars. You know, we talked a little bit about the communications tower at the presentation. We've estimated about $100,000 for that. We know that we have an estimate from the engineer, from structural engineers, that that would be about $90,000 to do that work on the ponter tower. Again, Vic is, has, we're approaching that on several fronts. We're continuing to have conversations with the state about it, but it is at the maximum load limit of that tower. And they've said they won't let us on that tower. So a couple of things we're doing, obviously, we are applying for some additional money out of the 911 fund to maybe support that because it does, it does support the state operations. It supports Hyde County, it will support Beaufort County. So we kind of feel like that ought to be an opportunity for them to help us out on that. We're also looking at it under financing package. And then also trying to have some conversations with some of the folks at the state about, is there an opportunity to, for us to get some kind of reimbursement on that? If we have to, if we have to pay at all to be able to get on the tower, then is there some opportunity for us to get reimbursed a piece of it as other people get on the tower? And the analogy I kind of make to that is, on the water sewer side, so you have a developer that puts in a long sewer line that connects their subdivision back to the main. A lot of times, there'll be a reimbursement agreement that's done with the developer that says, throughout this section of line, if somebody else attaches to that line, they'll pay to help reimburse you for the cost of running the big line. And my assumption, you know, I don't know if that'll work or not. I talked to the folks with, the radio folks about it, and they said, we've never seen that work before like that. But, you know, the way radio towers are set up is the last person on the tower who overloads it has to pay to reinforce the entire tower. Which really doesn't make a lot of sense to me because, you know, from that perspective, we just need to wait until somebody else gets on the tower, and then they have to fix it, and then we get back on it. You know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we're working multiple angles on that to try, to try to make that work. The courthouse annex, these are the roof, these are the roof replacement projects. What we did on that was we looked at, as you will recall, we had REI Roof Engineering Incorporated come in last year as part of the budget work, come in and do a roof assessment of all of our roofs across the county. They gave us a capital, they evaluated those roofs, and they said, here's, here are the ones that need to be replaced and when they need to be replaced. So they gave us that capital schedule to do that. Then they also gave us a maintenance capital, a maintenance piece of it that said, you need to spend this much money every year on maintenance just to keep them at a certain level, and then you can replace them at these times. You know, the idea is, you get them done, you get them done right, you do them right the first time, and then you get away from them for 15 years, 15 or 20 years. Instead of having to constantly patch here and there and not look after what you need to do, you might as well do it and do it right. So what we did was we looked at what was projected, what they had recommended in their capital project, in their capital budget for next year and then also in 18. Because what we anticipated was, if we were going to be borrowing money to do long-term capital project, we want to go ahead and look out a couple of years because we don't want to get in the same position we're in next year. Again, I'm of the same mind that we like pay-as-you-go, always have advocated for pay-as-you-go. The problem is, you can either, you can do pay-as-you-go on these if you want to, and you can kick the can down the road. Or we can try to spend some money and get ourselves caught up. We're way far behind, and we feel like we need to catch up. Ultimately, that's for this board to decide what you want to do. But these are the projects. The courthouse annex is a complete roof replacement. The old jail building is a partial roof replacement. The Oakland building is the low slope replacement roof sections. The Seaboard is a complete replacement. And then there is paving and having the engineers, the civil engineers go in and structure and look at how the sloping needs to be and the drainage work that needs to be done on the tidlin', building, parking lot, and doing whatever needs to be done to get the water to run off the way it's supposed to run off and get in the ditch the way it's supposed to instead of staying out in the middle of the parking lot. Also, paving the parking lot right next door, the county attorney's building right there. It's the only thing that's not paved where we park vehicles in the dirt. And then also in this one, we talked about, it's replacing the modular unit that's at the landfill. It's in pretty bad shape. And what we would do is propose to replace this under the borrowing package as well. And although this is a piece that is in the water fund enterprise fund, it's going to be paid out, we would propose paying it out of the borrowing package, but there will be a transfer, and you will see that transfer coming out of the water fund back to the general fund to pay its part of the debt service. Because enterprise funds stand on their own, and they pay their own way. They're pulling money out of the water fund to come back and pay its portion of its debt service in the general fund borrowing package.
To make sure that I understand each one of these buildings, tell me who the departments are in each one of these that were planning on doing major roof work to, starting with the courthouse annex.
The courthouse annex houses the water department as well as the district attorney's office.
Okay.
The old jail building houses juvenile probation as well as the, a unit of the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. The Oakland building houses the sheriff's office and the 911 communication center. The Seaboard building houses the tax collector, tax assessor, environmental health, planning, GIS, and inspections. The parking lot at the tidlin' building, the tidlin' building houses board of elections, veterans, adult probation and parole, as well as our lease agreements with numerous mental health contractors, as well as violent mental health and court human services, which is an inpatient treatment center.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That helps me quite a bit. I had gotten straight on a couple of them, but, you know, people use different terminology. Questions of, it looks like about three people can answer them as it relates to maintenance buildings and grounds. I don't want to cut anybody short because this, this is to the root of the $3 million loan that we've got in the budget process. Commissioner Richardson, this will give you an opportunity to ask additional questions as it relates to.
Well, I don't see that asking specific questions about what we're going to do with the money is not what my problem is. My problem is the county is moving from pay-as-you-go into debt financing for continuing operations. And the taxpayers should be, you know, aware of this, big problem, big deal.
My question, I guess, will be to Christina and to Brian as it relates to the study that we had. Are we already at the end of life on some of these roof repair jobs?
That was what we asked them to look at. We asked them to go in, and they core groups, they did, they looked at all of it and said, this is when these need to be replaced or you will start seeing significant maintenance costs and failures. And you're at the, they're at the end of their life.
Which we're already seeing significant costs. Jim can speak to numerous issues that we have at the health department. The Seaboard building where environmental health is housed, the flooring as well as the furniture has been replaced numerous times in there. I can't even begin to tell you how much ceiling grid has been replaced. And that particular roof has an inherent problem. It's not just pinhole leaks throughout. There's only one roof drain that drains that entire roof. And it runs adjacent, you can see it on the corner of Market and Third Street. And that office, it floods. What happens is the water is unable to escape through the roof drain, it's building up and backs up on the roof. And then that's when you get the multiple leaks throughout, especially on the north, the north wall, which is also where our server room is located. So we've experienced numerous failures to date in that building especially. The annex building, the second building, which is also.
Christina?
I'm sorry.
Should've got you to go up there earlier.
Stop. The annex building has also had numerous failures. Just as an example, the water department is housed on, it's a two-story building. The water department is housed on the first floor, and we have water in our light fixtures. So, you know, the roof is leaking, and then water finds a path and it travels down. So, yeah, we're having roof leaks on the first floor of a two-story building. But again, these are things that, the roofs, they've been patched. The REI, actually, we had a contractor come in at the first part of this budget year where they went around and did significant patches. But again, from REI's professional opinion, as someone said, the can's been kicked down the road, and we're continuing to do it, but we're hoping to just make repairs so that we no longer have to go back to it.
Yes.
How old are some of those roofs?
I can't answer that question. I do not have accurate records that I can tell you how old the roofs are.
Been around this since I was a little boy.
I know what it looks like from underneath looking up at the roof, where it looks like it's smoked and been burnt at one time.
Yes, sir.
In that building. So the roof has been there a long time.
It's been there a long time.
Been there a long time.
The Oakland building, I walked around during the storm event we had just a few weeks ago, kind of an odd occurrence that happened, and no one was expecting the amount of rain that came in. And I went up to the third floor of the Oakland building and walked around the perimeter. And I mean, the number of leaks, it was at least 20 different leaks around the perimeter of the building.
We could always issue umbrellas.
Any, any other questions? Thank you very much. And it looks like you're finally getting some work done on the old courthouse.
Yes, sir. They are working, working. Again, we're limited to weekend work, so it's taken us a little bit more time, but they were able to work Saturday as well as Sunday this past weekend, and they are, they're moving right along. So hopefully, that will be completed, depending upon the weather. But again, that's, Brian and Anita were speaking about the project funds, and that, that project is also in a project fund. So you're able to track the funds.
Brian, anything else on maintenance and buildings?
That's right. I mean, it's just, it is a, it is terribly important that we look after our assets. And we need to do, we need to do that. And the health of our employees.
Well, don't ask me to go on top of the courthouse.
We're having a.
I realize there's a lot of safety stuff up there.
Actually, that's one of the things that we will not, folks will not be allowed up there. So once you fix them, you don't want folks walking around on them.
Just you and Christina.
No, not you.
Okay. You want to go to the debt service?
Yes, sir. On page 49, this is. On page 49, this is your debt service page, including the General Fund and your other, or your debt support, your tax supported and your non-tax supported. But just as an update, the local government bond act, which is general statute 159, keeps governments from, it doesn't allow governments to incur debt or general fund or general obligation to a GO, which is, which is supported by the ability to tax. Doesn't allow you to exceed 8% of your appraised property value. You will see that right now you are at .38% of your appraised property value. So you've got your wells well underneath that requirement. You also have a legal debt margin as of June 30 of '16 of $443 million. You see your ratios, your general fund debt per capita, it's $463, and then the GO debt is 361. The county is a AA3 with Moody's and a AA minus with Standard and Poor's. Based upon where we are, our size, our challenges, I doubt you will ever see, well, I can pretty much guarantee you will never see Beaufort County with a AAA rating, but I think you're doing very, very well where you are. There are a lot of folks that are a lot worse shaped than we are. So, you know, the AA3 and the AA minus are really good indicators that the finances, the finances are strong. And that's not outside rating agencies, that doesn't have anything to do with anything that we do. So you'll see on page 49, you have the categories of debt. We break those out in school debt and it shows how much debt you're paying this year that we've shown in the General Fund for that. Total of $2.1 million for the debt service in principal and then $775,000 in interest. But that's broken out in the school debt, the allied health building at the Community College, which is a USDA debt, the energy savings contract that you have on several of the buildings that we recently, a couple of years ago, refinanced. The Third Street Building installment purchase, which is the county attorney building next door, that is under an installment purchase contract. So that essentially means that the, it's not GO, there's no taxing authority, there's no tax-supported debt there. It is, the asset is pledged. So if you defaulted on that, which you never would, because not only would you not default on it as a county, but the local government commission would never let you default on them on those payments. So you'll see that there, that's, and if you turn over to page 50, you will see all the different, the general obligation, the general fund outstanding debt, and a description of what GO, what GO debt is, and then what installment purchase debt is, which is what we refer to as the 16820 financing, where you pledge the asset and the bank essentially says, we're going to loan you the money and if you don't pay it, we're going to take the asset back. But again, you're never going to not pay a interest, you're never going to not pay your debt service because you wouldn't do that as board, plus the local government commission would never allow you to do that to begin with. They have the authority to come in and take over your books and make sure that you make your payments and do what you have to do. Now, that's only happened a couple of times in history in North Carolina, but they will do it and have the authority to do that. So you see on page 50, you'll see the bonds, the current bonds that you have for the schools. You'll see the remaining borrowing packages, financing packages you have, where their balances are as of June 30 of '17 and then '18. We run those all the way out to '21 and you'll see those stepping down. On page 51, you'll see the issue date, the final pay date, the description of it, what we're paying fiscal year '67, '78, '89, what the interest rate is and what type of bond that is, whether it's GO or whether it's installment. Now on this, just want to clear up something in the message, and this is on me because I missed it. When we're looking at our step down this year, in, we were anticipating about a $450,000 reduction in our school bond piece that comes off, and you'll see that. But when we reladdered, when we refinanced the other stuff, the school bond, two years ago, that was done on a level savings piece. So in actuality, instead of that $450 rolling off completely, we only roll off about $50. And that was missed, so I missed that. So what we essentially have is there's about 3, 400, there's about 400 that instead of being completely covered, which we anticipated being completely covered, is not going to be completely covered. So we'll have, although about $50,000 will roll off, we will have to make up next year about $350.
Right.
That's right.
Okay. So we'll have about $350, which again, in our conversations, we anticipate if we have the normal growth, we ought to be able to do that. But I want to make sure that's clear to everybody. Because originally, our budget is good in this and it all balances, it's fine. But in my message, my message said we were anticipating not having a hole there because we would be rolling off some debt. We weren't rolling off as much debt as I anticipated we were going to roll off because we missed that one piece. So instead of being $450, it's about $50. And then you've got that piece left. So, does that make sense?
And we can show you a picture of that. If you look on page 51, at that table, you can see the first item listed there are the 2006 series GO bonds. And you can see in the third column where in '18, '19, there's zero debt service. So they're completely paid out next year in '17, '18. And that's what we were looking at. So this is great, they're paid out $450,000. You know, we'll use that money to fill the hole that we have this year because we're appropriating $400,000 or recommending to next year in fund balance. So we're going to use that to fill the hole in the future. Now if you go down, what we missed, if you go down, let's say, one, two, three, three or four rows, you'll see the 2015 refunding bonds. And you'll see in the second column where for '17, '18, the payment's $131,956. Well, what we missed was that payment going up to the $574,237 the next year in '18, '19.
Now, is that payment going to be level at that amount for the next?
It is. We went ahead and looked out for future years and it doesn't go up anymore above the $574. What we actually see is about $50,000 to $60,000 falling off every year for the next 10 years consistently.
Okay. So if we were looking, and I can't remember, if we were looking at a 20-year bond, it's still going to be a 20-year bond. We're not shortening that up with this payment.
Right. What, so what they did is they, when we did the refunding in 2015, they levelized the savings and they also had to pay off some of the bonds that were non-callable. And in order to do that, they had to ladder up the payment in '18, '19 to accomplish that.
And so what they did was they looked and they said, you've got $450 rolling off, we're going to ladder that in so that you can do that. And I was here, Anita wasn't here. So that's on me.
Well, it's on me too, but the good news is we, you know, we found it now, so it would've been worse if we found it.
It's on me too, because I didn't get it when that happened, but anyway. Question, if we choose to go out, if we had chosen to go out, we spent the money for the radio equipment and done that on a lease, I'm not sure whether it would have qualified or not, but let's just say we did it on a lease, would that show up in our debt and in our structure here?
Yes.
Okay. Thought it would, so.
Yes, just like if you go down to the very bottom, well, the bottom line is a total, but the next to the last item is the installment purchase that we're proposing.
Three million.
This year, yeah, for the 10 years, for the $3 million.
And a lease would fall in the same table if we had have done a lease on the radio equipment.
Yes.
Questions? We're not ready for a break yet.
I got a question. On the energy savings equipment installment purchase contracts, how long does that have to run and what is the revenue piece that goes with that?
The revenue piece is paying the bonds essentially. Remember how they do that? They say, we're going to replace all these lights, make them more energy efficient. So instead of your light bill being $20, it's not going to be paying, so the $10 you saved, you're going to go, you're going to pay, you're going to pretend like you're going to pay that $20 consistently and you're going to use your savings to pay the bonds.
Yeah. So how is that working out?
It's working out fine because they have a guarantee in their contract that says either you make it or we pay the difference. So we haven't fault, we haven't gotten into a situation where it's not covering it. And if it did, they would make the difference.
When is the last time we audited it?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know.
So, you know, you really don't have a good answer until you audit it.
Well.
We just think we got a good answer because we have to make the demand on them if it's not working. They don't come to us and say, gee, we're sorry, our bill, here's a check. We have to go to them. So that's why my question is, when was the last time that was audited?
It hasn't been audited since I've been here.
Well, we need to audit that and we need to know where we are with it, whether we're making money or losing money.
I think when we were talking about doing that.
Sorry, I had to take care of something else in another building. Is that the energy audit?
Energy with the school.
No.
That's just us.
Schneider Electric is who we're contracted with and they actually do an annual report for that. So I'll be happy to provide that.
Yes.
To the commissioners.
And that last payment's August of '26.
And I think we've, I think I've seen, I think we've seen one.
August of 2020.
Oh, of 2020, okay. Yeah, I would like to see, I've never seen the audit.
I'm not sure if you can classify it as an audit, but they do the annual report, which gives you the summary of the utility costs and the costs that we pay to them here.
Do you want to, if there are any other questions? If not, we'll move to the non-departmental.
All right, this is on page 53, this is what we call the non-departmental budget. And again, it's stuff that we would, that we could theoretically break down and put per department, but it just, it would take more time and more energy than it's worth to do that. So we, because it benefits the entire county. Like the state unemployment insurance is at 50. We're still showing a little bit in there at 25 at the FLSA law impact. This is where you have the employee recognition program. I know last year when we put the budget out, this used to be under the county commissioners or under the management budget. We moved it over here to non-departmental. And we got, I think some folks lost it and they said, there's not going to be an appreciation thing there.
That's employee assistance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Employee lunches down there at the bottom. Employee assistance, I apologize, that's the employee assistance and that is for the assistance program that's available for all counties that you put in place last year.
What does that do?
It allows for employees to meet with either a counselor or a mental health professional or a financial professional that provides counseling services. It also allows us to refer people to that if we have disciplinary issues or those kind of things.
Have we, have we used it?
Yes.
Okay. Is it not an 800 number that they can call to get started? Is that?
There is a number that they call, yes, sir, and it's posted in all the break rooms and it's been distributed to everybody. But we get a, we get a very generic breakdown from that.
I don't want to.
Yeah, we don't get specific stuff, but we know that there are certain things. So that's the EAP, what folks call an EAP, Employees Assistance Program. Insurance and bonds is overall. IT support is down a little bit. Postage is in this category. There's employee luncheon. And then I have put in here, and just call it out for you because it's not, hadn't been there before, there's $15,000 put in there to do a telephone system study. The phone systems, I mean, we have multiple phone systems across the county. The one at DSS is at end of life. The one here is probably close to end of life, maybe already at end of life. And what we would like to do is go in and have someone come in and look at that for us, somebody from a technology group, not a salesperson to come in and look at it for us, but somebody who would give us a fair look at it, tell us what makes the most sense for us to replace those systems. Because personally, I think we ought to be done on a county-wide basis. We ought to be maximizing the backbone that we already have between departments with internet capability. We've got fiber running between some of the buildings. We ought to be maximizing that. And how do we do that in the most efficient and effective manner instead of, instead of having old systems that are, that are, that are just getting by? And if we have a major crash on one of them, we're in a lot of trouble because there are a lot of, they're just end of life. So that's what that's for.
Questions? Okay. You want to go to transfer to other funds?
Yes, sir. There is on page 55, you have the transfer to tax revaluation. This is something that you're required to do by statute every year. You take an eighth, essentially an eighth. Since you are on a, every eight-year revaluation cycle, you're required to essentially set aside funds, the projected amount of funds you think you'll need when you have to do revaluation again. You're supposed to be setting that money aside, one-eighth of it every year, so that you never get behind. If you were on a four-year revaluation, you'd divide that number by four, you'd be putting that away every year. But that's transferring money in for that. Economic development, that's the $80,000, which is for the.
That is for the airport grant.
Right. Airport grant and then also the money for the building.
Media of 100, $5,000.
The airport grant, you remember, is the piece that there was an agreement with the city that any growth that occurred beyond a certain baseline at the airport, you would give them that tax money because they de-annexed it and you would give them, the county gets a baseline, a certain amount of money, no matter what, we get that amount of money. And because it's now de-annexed, whatever growth that occurs out there, they get that back to them as an economic development tool. So we put that in there, don't really know what that is until we run the numbers, but there's also, it's an in and out. We get it on the revenue side because we're collecting it, but we show it out on the expenditure side. It's an in and out piece, so. There are no, there's a, there are no transfers to capital projects yet and there are no transfers to special revenue funds.
There could be a budget amendment during the middle of the year to put money there, depending on what we do with the financing.
That's where that would.
Well, we started at five, we've been an hour and a half, so we're going to take a 15-minute break and come back.
So do you need, let me ask you this real quick before we break. I apologize. Can you, are we okay to cut loose any of the general fund departments because you're moving into human services next? If they, if they're good?
I don't have any problems. I mean, I think it would be informative just to hang out. No, you're excused. Excuse. Brian?
So we are now moving to human services. And we'll start with the Department of Social Services and I'm going to turn it over to DeSonia and Melanie. The Department of Social Services is just overall, they're down about 8.3%, which is pretty significant. I think they did a really good job this year in looking at their budget. There are a lot of interesting ins and outs of the DSS budget and department budget because they're so intertwined with federal and state money. And there's a piece that the county pays and there's 90% money that comes back from the state. So it is really an art for them and how they deal with those budgets. Because you can go in and say, well, I want to cut this, and you can cut something and you're only saving a dollar out of $10 on the county side and you're doing away with $9 on the federal side. So they have a, they have a, there's a lot of expertise that goes into managing those budgets over there. So I'm going to let them speak to their budget.
Well, like Brian said, we do have a decrease for next year. The majority of the decrease is due to the anticipation that our childcare subsidy program will be administered, the reimbursement piece through NCFAST. We are scheduled to go into that system, Beaufort County is, in September. And so that's 100% reimbursed funds. So we've budgeted for half, that, you know, after six months, we should be fully administered. So we've budgeted for half, um, that, you know, after six months, we should be fully administering the reimbursement in NCFAST. And it won't be, um, we won't be claiming reimbursement for that anymore. But that's the majority of the decrease for next year.
So that's showing up under the operating portion, Brian?
Which exact division?
Page fifty-seven is where I'm looking at. Part of it. Any, anything else you wanna touch on, Azur?
Anything else you want, Sonya?
No. I think with, uh, you've heard a lot about the, um, issues around Departments of Social Services. With DHHS, we continue to have issues statewide with the NCFAST system. We've talked a lot, but I think with Beaufort County, what you, what you will see with our performance indicators is that we consistently are performing, uh, above the state standard. And I think a lot of that has to do with the investments that the county has made with our IT. So I think that those are the issues that you'll continue to see in, uh, in the state, but right now I think we're in a good place. Questions?
I don't have any questions. You're to be commended.
So Health Department on page seventy-nine, of course Jim's here and they have kinda that same kinda, uh, amount running back and forth. You'll see on page seventy-nine where local funding, which is county funding for the Health Department, only comprises forty-three percent of that budget. So the majority, the majority of that budget comes from state and federal sources or federal services. And again, it's, it's, uh, it is, it is an expertise in dealing with that, those different types of funding that Jim and the staff deal with, so.
Right. Um, so the total budget is three million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that looks like it's up quite a bit from last year. As a matter of fact, it's up two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and four dollars. But I wanna make sure to explain that, uh, that money is the expansion budget with the jail health and healthy living clinic services. So out of the, um, the county dollars that are going towards that is an increase of, uh, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two. And a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-four of that, so all but thirty thousand dollars is money that was under the Sheriff's Department last year, which will be moved into ours. So even though it looks like we're going up a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand of that is actually coming from the Sheriff's Department, which leaves me about thirty thousand dollars above what, uh, we were looking at last year. And out of that thirty thousand dollars, most of that is health insurance and the, uh, retirement program that contributed to that.
Comments, questions? I think you, I think you've already done a good job prior to it talking about the expansions, so. Thank you very much.
Page one oh-one is veteran services. They're up two point two percent. And again, this is a one-person department. And all of that is essentially, again, health insurance and retirement. It's only slightly up just a little bit, two point two percent. So it looks like a lot, but it's not. And I think the only thing that we, the only thing that we added in, in Karen's budget was under professional development. We bumped her professional development up a little bit because she is now the pulse of certification through the state for, for veteran services. And she's gotta be able to maintain that, which means she needs to go to a class to get some con ed or otherwise. That's about, that's about as flat a budget as you can get, although it shows a two point two percent increase.
Okay, alright, you wanna go to one oh-three?
Page one oh-three is the mental health, uh, piece and transportation. Down at the bottom, you'll see what makes this up. Beaufort area transit, now we are recommending that you go from eighty-eight, seven fifty to one forty-one, two fifty. And that is a programmed increase of fifty-two, five, which is a, which is the start of a two-year proposed increase for them, um, in an effort to provide full funding for that service. Because right now, um, they are subsidizing that through BCDC. And they're not able, you know, we've had some meetings with them, they came, did a presentation to y'all, um, and talked about that. So our, our discussions with them were that if we could get them, um, because otherwise they said, you know, we're not gonna continue to provide this service. And, and if they were not providing that service, you would either have to decide that you didn't wanna provide that service at all, or you would have to go find somebody else. And my anticipation would be that it would cost you more than, it would cost you a lot more than what you're paying now simply because of the infrastructure that's already in place, but.
Well, while you're on that, I'd like a word on that. This is a program that the county's not required to put one dime in. I've been fighting this for twenty years now. Y'all keep putting money into it because the, the state started this program with seed money to nurture, uh, uh, local trans, transport. And what has happened in Beaufort County has happened in a lot of other counties. It's morphed into a welfare system. And with, with them hauling people to social services, hauling people to medical care, hauling people to this, hauling people for that, and nobody pays anything. Because social services usually pays them some money each year, keep this thing going. And the people that ride pay very little. They pretend that they have a public service part of this and that you can get them to make a haul for you. You know, they'll pick you up or do this. But in most cases, they charge people very, very, very little money. They are supposed to get all of the money that they need to balance their budget from charging the users of the system. It is not up to people who are already working, bought a car of their own, paying their own transportation, and the county is subsidizing this as a welfare, uh, deal. And we should not be doing this. I've talked to people with the state that run this, and they tell me the same thing that I have just told you. They never intended for this thing to become what it is today. It's a welfare deal and, and the people that use it should be the people that are paying for it, not people that are out working for a living, paying all of this subsidy money to these people, with them threatening to withdraw the service if we don't keep, if we don't keep funding them. From my, from my standpoint, I see plenty of taxis running around town. We can stop funding this or we can find somebody else to run it. But the taxpayers are being taken advantage of. And putting another fifty thousand dollars in this thing, adding, improving their budget by fifty thousand dollars is a ripoff on the taxpayer.
Any other comments?
We have anybody here to speak to that?
Aight.
No. They'll be here, um.
During the outside agencies.
They'll be here during outside agencies to speak.
So we'll get clarification, because I don't remember a lot of that recall.
It's not a question of clarification. What I just told you is what the law is, what truth is, and the way that thing's supposed to work. Chris is gonna come in here and tell you something different, and he's not being truthful. Yes, I said that in public.
Say anything you want, it's not what I recall.
Well, during that, during our planning, uh, we did have some good conversation. I, I guess the thing that concerns me is when, and I'm not sure that I've got this straight, maybe Chris or somebody can clarify, is that, is it, we're having some competition as it relates to some of the services that they historically have done?
I don't know, I don't think it's necessarily competition. I think there's some, there's some funding streams and, and Sonya.
Some reimbursements that?
There was some, if I mess this up, and I probably will, correct me. But there was, um, related to some of the DSS clients, they were using Bats transportation. But because of the way it was structured and they were using shared rides, which shared rides are more economical than you just putting one person in a vehicle. They're using shared rides, but the state or the feds didn't recognize that as a correct reimbursable. So they wouldn't reimburse us for it. So we had to go back and start using their taxis, which is a higher cost than shared rides. Right? She can address that.
What, the part, the portion that deals with Department of Social Services is what's known as non-emergency medical transportation. And that is a mandated service. If you receive Medicaid, uh, we have to provide transportation to those Medicaid, uh, reimbursable services. And we have to use the least expensive method of transportation. And when Bats went to the shared ride, it was more expensive than the taxis. So a lot of the, the rides now are actually being provided by taxi service. The problem, uh, and we do use Bats because, uh, because some, some, uh, some of our clients have to have a Lyft van, and they do have that, they're, they're able to provide that service. But, uh, a lot of the folks are on, uh, that provide, that receive the service are on, uh, life sustaining services like dialysis. But that is a mandated service. So, and right now, that does come through Department of Social Services. We determine, uh, we say that they're, they receive Medicaid, and then we decide if the trips are, uh, appropriate and, and we pay the bills. But those are the ones that, that pertains to our agency.
Is, is there anything that would keep us from doing some kind of a joint venture with Hyde County to take care of some of the people that live in the Bell Haven or Pantaglia area? We, we, we've got, they're, they're stopping in Bell Haven, because I see them most mornings, and we have a unit down there. And some mornings, there's only one person in the Hyde County, you know, headed to Washington, great aware they're taking them. Have we, have we ever looked at?
There's nothing to preclude us from, uh, with signing them up as a vendor for us. We could do that. I mean, if it, if they're interested, in fact, we're in the process now, we're having to renegotiate the contracts, uh, for the new fiscal year. And if they're qualified in, uh, in Hyde County, most likely they'll meet this, it's the same mandates for Beaufort County.
Would, would Martin County share the same kind of a transportation, bringing people to Washington to the medical?
I mean, they have a, a transportation system as well.
Yeah, they, I think the DSS actually runs their transportation service in Washington and Martin County. I mean, it's, it's under their umbrella from what I understand.
I think, I think you can have some of those conversations with Chris when he's here.
Okay, okay.
I don't wanna get too deep into his because I don't.
Alright. Any other questions on the, uh, health and transportation?
But again, on all this, you'll see the Trillium Health, that's a contract we have with Trillium to provide services. The alcohol treatment, which comes off of bottle tax, um, and then the, the passages piece. And that's a state, the passages is a, is a state grant that flows through us.
Okay, uh, community service?
Carpet extension is, uh, the next, uh, is under, is the first one under, um, community services. They're actually, the, the budget shows down about fifteen percent, fourteen point nine percent. And of course, if you take out, you gotta remember last year, again, it's where we have to show money flowing through. There's sixty thousand dollars that was in their budget last year that's not in their budget this year because we bought two vans. And remember, Potash bought one of those vans, so we show, and you bought one of them. So on their budget, on the expenditure side, we show a sixty thousand dollar expenditure last year to buy those two vans. On the revenue side, you show a thirty thousand coming in from Potash last year. That's one of the big changes you'll see in this budget down. There, if you take that out, they're actually up slightly, but, um, but Rod can answer any of those questions that you may have particularly. I know they've got a, you know, they're sharing, they're still sharing a position. So they've got a lot of good things going on. If you have any questions for him.
I don't know about the rest of them, but I've got one question. I've not looked in the expansion part. There was some discussion about the possibility of getting maybe a trailer, enclosed trailer, uh, that could be used along with the van?
To, yes, uh, to pull, uh, for Aaron to be able to move all these animals around for the livestock show, I believe it was. And we never really pursued that, to be honest with you. I think we have that covered with the equipment we've already got. I, I think we're gonna be able to make that work with, with the trailer we have already.
Is that, any other questions, Rod? Thank you.
So on page one oh-nine is soil and water conservation. They're down two point four percent. We need to answer any particular questions you may have. I think they've got a fair amount of stuff going on right now, and we'll have a fair amount of stuff going on in the near year from, from, um, grants, from snagging and dragging. My goodness, there's some, there's some money being put out there, and hopefully there'll be more money being put out there. And if it comes, it'll just be an in and an out, so, um, it won't be county dollars related to it. If you have any questions for her.
Ann? I, I'm doing this, Randy, Randy's giving me the sign back there. Would you repeat that dollar amount again?
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And that will be for some vegetative debris removal from four of our drainage districts.
Apparently you're getting some of the money that DOT should have because they're letting things lay, that, that needs to be snagged and dragged, too.
That's good.
When it's tied, but. Any questions?
Nope. Snagging, drag, snagging.
Thank you very much.
Snagging. Uh, youth services, which is on page one thirteen, this is the JCPC program. I think we talked a little bit about the, y'all, y'all know about the JCPC program. That was, um, um, y'all recently approved the match. It's a ten percent match from state funding. The Boys and Girls Club of Preparation is where this falls under, and Pam and the Pals. The only difference, this shows it's down two point three percent. The reason it's down two point three percent is last year, you gave the boys and girls, uh, five thousand additional dollars in one-time funding. It was, you gave, you historically have given them forty thousand dollars. Last year, you gave them an additional five and marked it as one-time funding. So we dropped them back to forty. So that's where you see, everything else is the same. That's where you see the decrease of two point some percent, so. And of course, JCPC, we're showing that number right now as, as the grant that they anticipate receiving from the state throughout the year, especially toward the end of the year. You'll see JCPC sometimes ramp up and get a little extra money that, that, uh, that hasn't been spent, so they'll divvy that out to the counties. A ten percent match, and most of the time, they're able to cover that, so, um, but you may see that change a little bit throughout the year.
Does that include the last, uh, budget amendment we did or we took action last month?
You took action to approve their match, and that's the match. Well, well, that's not the match. The match is ten percent. So they'll, again, that's one of those where, uh, you show the total expenditure, because the money's flowing through the county. So a hundred and sixty-seven, six twenty-eight is the total amount. It, it includes the J, the state allocation, your ten percent match. We show it on our expenditure side, it goes to the JCPC council, they distribute those funds to the agencies that are doing that work, they monitor it, they keep up with it, they report back to us and file all the paperwork with the state. And then, um, and then we show it, we show the revenue from the state coming in, less your ten percent local match, on, coming in on the revenue side.
But on the expense side, this number here represents the county's portion, too.
Yes, sir. That represents the entire amount. It, it represents the entire amount.
The state and county share.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Because we have to show everything on the expenditure side.
Everybody good? Alright. Where do we go next?
Uh, we are under outside agencies. And again, we will, we will have those folks, um, I, I guess on the outside agencies, we showed this as a continuation budget piece. And then showed any outside agencies with expansions that they would come and speak to y'all about. So it is the same, um, essentially is where we were at, actually it's a little less from the original budget. Oh, that's right, we pulled out the dues. There were a couple of those we pulled, you'll see like, um, um, what was it? Chamber of Commerce is, we, we, we show those big zeros now, like the Washington Chamber of Commerce was fifteen hundred. We don't show that because we moved. We don't show that, because we moved that to the Board of Commissioners, the Belle Haven Chamber. They actually requested additional money, so we, we took out the piece that, um, they requested ten. Took the thousand that is the membership, put it under the county commissioners, and then the remaining nine thousand is in a service expansion. But this essentially maintains all of them, unless there were ones that had one-time funding, like, um, there was a couple of them here that had one-time funding.
Chalkwindy.
Chalkwindy. Yep, Chalkwindy Recreation, we gave them ten thousand dollars last year, and that was an additional, whatever difference is between seventy-two hundred dollars. So we held everybody back to what their original continuation was.
Why, why isn't Boys and Girls Club and Pamlico Pals, why aren't they in outside agencies?
Well, they're, they've historically been shown under youth services, so that's where we show them on page one thirteen, under youth services. They are essentially an outside agency, but they deal specifically with youth services, and so...
Yeah, but so do all these other things. Go to, if you go to outside agencies, you're picking at nits over there, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, historically, that's where it's been.
Here again, I've not been all the way back to the outside agencies. Is Bath Library back there in the expansion part?
The li, Bath Library piece? Yes, sir.
It is, okay.
The, the historic piece.
No, no. The Bath Library was asking for some money. Or at least, I got an email that said that they were asking for money, and I...
I don't remember getting one from them.
So we didn't receive an application, is what you're saying?
We got one from the Historic Bath Foundation.
Now, this is the Bath Library.
But I'm not sure in our outside agencies that we received any of them.
Mr. Chairman, uh, do you have a name that I can reach out to someone and make sure we just didn't miss something?
I, I think it was from Peterson. I, I guess a question, you know, because I don't fully understand how this B H M library budget rolls up with some of the individual ones, but the question I get asked is, you know, Belle Haven gets a thousand, why does another library don't get a thousand? And I, you don't have to answer that tonight, but that's going to be asked when we do the expansion part. I think Belle Haven's library is the only one on here outside of, uh, the Bryan Library and the B H N.
You're right.
It's tradition, is what they've always gotten.
I don't, I don't know. That's something that the board's always funded historically.
It's sort of like the recreational stuff. That dates back to President Johnson, when we were doing it back then.
Oh, Nixon.
Nixon.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember your comment when it was brought up.
Yeah, it was Nixon that started it.
Okay.
But the B H M piece, you know, you are a member of B H M, and you provide money to them, and then they, their board deals with it. Now, the money that you provide stays in Beaufort County, except for a little piece that goes for administration.
Like I say, I don't, I don't understand that piece of it, but, uh, there, there's questions to come. Any other comments? All right.
Um, your next one is on page one seventeen, economic development. That budget is flat. It's actually, um, it's actually a little less than the original budget. And the original budget was two eighty-one. I got to say that for Martin's benefit, because he actually, uh, he actually wanted to, so the difference in last year's budget and this year's budget is, um, seventy-two dollars. And Martin wanted to, Martin wanted me to give him that seventy-two dollars back. He said, he said to me, "You said flat." No. So he's, um, yeah, I mean, it, it does, um... Any questions you have?
None.
I, I don't, I don't think there's any question. If you'll come to Belle Haven, I'll buy you lunch, because you did a good job. Thanks. Planning?
The planning department is, uh, is down two percent. And, uh, let's see, I don't remember exactly where that change was. Oh, we pulled out?
Oh, we pulled out?
Right, right. The airport, for some reason, the airport grant piece was, for some reason, under there previously. Don't know how it got under there, but it had historically been there. We moved it out, um, because it just didn't make sense being in planning.
Any questions of, uh, Martin or... No, I'm sorry.
Planning.
Are we in planning?
Planning. Well, he's not here, is he? Okay. Any, any question?
How, how are we doing this road sign stuff?
Right now, our guys are doing it. We're having some conversations about whether we can do that in a manner with the, um, the volunteer fire department.
Who, who are our guys?
Our inspectors. They're doing that on Fridays.
Well, they really don't have time.
Well, and that's, that's the piece that we're running into, is, is with the economy picking back up, um, they're spending more time doing inspections, and, um, you know, historically, what they've done, I guess ever since they started the program, was they do that on Fridays. They take Friday afternoon and put signs up.
That was fine when the economy was slow and there wasn't anything to do, but, but I'm getting complaints about signs not being up, and I'm seeing, as I go around the county, a lot of signs have been down for a long time.
And that is one of the things that we're having conversations about. I think we talked a little more, a little bit about it, was having, was seeing if we could get it, uh, working out, look, the local fire departments to where, because they know those roads, they know what needs to be up, what's not, so we're working on it. And of course, that money, it's not like we need new money for that. That money's in this budget, so if, if we're able to work that out, which we think we will, we'll use money out of this budget, so it won't be new money.
Okay, we've done the school. It's public safety next.
No, sir. Uh, actually, um, and I don't see marks or, um, but the, uh, community college would be the last piece of education. We're going through education tonight, and the last piece of that would be, uh, the community college. So essentially... Okay, so on page one twenty-five is the community college. We gave them what they asked for in their current expense, and, um, we looked at what they asked for in their capital. And based on the, the big cut they got last year, we had anticipated actually more of a capital request than we got, and essentially felt that was an appropriate capital request. Now, we also went back in and looked in our proposed borrowing package, did it make sense for any of those projects to be able to be pulled under the, the ten-year financing? And we, we found some of those. So what we were proposing was a hundred and sixty-five thousand of that would be cash capital financed, and then a hundred and eighteen thousand would be cash capital. And you'll see that. And again, theirs is kind of the way the school system was as well. Excuse me. Y'all, um, y'all gave them some budget flexibility, so I think they moved some money from capital to, um, to continuing our current expense, the capital return experience last year. But our numbers are based on what we originally started with, so you'll see some differences in there compared to ours.
Did the college realize they were on the agenda tonight?
They were. I had, I had that conversation with Dr. Tanzi, and she was actually going to get Mark to come, so I don't know, maybe if they, if they missed that, but, um, we'll follow back up with them and see if we can't count here before.
Comments? Questions?
Are you going to try and get him here again?
Yes, we'll try, we'll, we'll, I'm sure they'll be. We're happy to talk about any additional thing you had on your schedule, um...
Is there anything else scheduled for tonight?
Not anything scheduled for tonight. We start with public safety and the two, and the two enterprise funds tomorrow. But we're happy to get back over anything you got or talk anymore. We're here to answer any questions.
I'm not asking for a motion, because this is a recess. All right. We, we're going to recess until tomorrow night at five o'clock.
I'll be late.